But wanted to give you an update on staffing. So, I, you know, I mentioned that, and this is similar to what we've done in the past in terms of an overview, but I just wanted to show you, this is, these are my notes and documents, I just wanted you to see in terms of, if you look at just how much, not the paper I handed you, but what I have in my hand here, all of this, there have been so many moving parts, this is a, this is a work in progress as we speak still, and in some areas in particular, and I'll try to go over that, but this is kind of an overview, a summary of sort of where we are at this point. We did have, continue to have some loss of enrollment, as far as our ADM from last year to this year, so it will, it will affect staffing. However, on a positive note, while you don't want loss of teacher units at all, we have been losing 50 something students per year for the last several years, and that's several teacher units. So, we're still losing, but it's not as bad as it has been. But you can kind of see the breakdown for the six schools there, and I've got in parentheses beside each school name, and this is how many total teacher units they're gaining or losing, negative means they're, they lost enrollment, therefore lost teacher units for staffing for next year. So you can see Brownwood lost 1.2, Caldwell 1.35, Nelson gained, almost the same that Caldwell lost, 1.37, Collins lost a little less than a teacher unit, 0.83, and you'll remember, we discussed, for those of you who were on the board last year, Collins is the school, the state has not approved the budget yet, but that is where, those grade levels are where they're talking about a better divisor in the budget, but we don't know that yet, so we had to base it on the current divisor that we have. That is an area that we have had, we have and continue to have to have local units there, otherwise the class sizes would be hovering, average class size is almost 40 if you just gave them the units that they earned. So we're hoping with the budget, there's at least some relief, so that will help in the overall cost for staffing. And then the high, but the junior high lost 0.21, so almost a quarter of a unit, and the high school gained 1.28. So when you look at gains and losses throughout the system, you're looking at about a loss of a teacher unit in terms of compared to what we were funded. That doesn't count positions that are funded in other ways, whether it's Title I positions we funded, or some of the IDEA special ed positions and so forth. So you can see, we had preliminary meetings and then we met with the principals, so looking at Brownwood, we are having to cut because of the loss of enrollment, one general education teacher unit that will, looking at projected class sizes for next year and discussions with the principal, it makes sense that that would be a fourth grade, basically we would cut a unit in fourth grade. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the teacher that won't be at the school, you may have to do some movement around in-house, but it will be a fourth grade class. We, we do have at least one person who's been talking about retirement there, if that were to happen, we wouldn't have to release the teacher, but if that doesn't happen, we'll have to non-renew a probationary teacher at that school. Caldwell is losing a unit, and that will be a third grade position most likely, and for that particular school, and if you'll skip down to Nelson, we're adding a unit, we have a, a non, a, all the staff at Caldwell, the teachers are non-probationary, so we are taking the person that was last hired, that person, we've already had that discussion with that person, at this time, nobody's retiring or leaving that we're, that we know of at this time, and so that person would, will transfer to Nelson, and we've already had that conversation with the principals and the teacher. Collins, we're cutting one teacher unit there, it's going to be a sixth grade position. We do have a teacher who's retiring, and I think we'll be able to probably handle that in-house, is kind of our current discussion, without having to non-renew someone in that, at that school. The junior high school, we're not making any cuts to general education teacher units there, and then for the high school positions, not recommending, no cuts or additions there either. They had a little bit over last year, so you got the compensation with the earned unit, so it'll help in the budget, but not change with the staffing. Going back up, looking at each of the schools, there had been some discussion about CMP at our last meeting, look on page two of the, of the document that I've given you, and you see where that line is in the middle, kind of in the middle, right below the middle of the page, look below that, this is the same information Melba shared with Sheila about kind of our status with meals per labor hour. This is something we've discussed quite a bit since I've been here, maybe not with the two new board members on board. Right away, at one of the new superintendent trainings, I was given a piece of paper and came back and asked Melba, because our meals per labor hour was not what it needed to be. So she and I have had ongoing discussions about what, and we've done some, at our administrator trainings, meetings, we've had a lot of conversations and training with them about what this means when we don't have the appropriate meals per labor hour. There are basically two ways to correct it, either you increase participation or you cut staff. And so, we've had lots of discussion, and as you know, Mr. Hodges' background is as a CMP, not only director, but auditor, and, and so he's engaged in this conversation as well. Part of what has happened is our enrollment has gone down, and so you can see in this little chart kind of what has happened over time, and there are all kinds of ideas in what, in terms of ways to address it, what we talked about earlier with pre-K would help a little, but at the end of the day, we've had people come in to do outside audits, to look at our CMP programs, to offer suggestions that we're, to be more efficient with our staff, whatever we can do to make improvements, and, and there have been some specific suggestions that have been made that we implemented, but this, this is the, the situation. So going back to the first page, you can see kind of overall, we're, we're looking at cutting, basically, we have one part-time CMP position at the high school, with that and some additional CMP positions, one at Caldwell, one at the junior high, and one at the high school, so three and a half positions. That will not correct the meals per labor hour, it will, it won't get us where we need to be there, but it will go a long way toward helping in that area, so basically, we felt like that's all, I mean, that's a lot, and it's going, it's going to be something that will have to be absorbed in the, in the, with the CMP staff at each school, but it will begin to make a dent in the gap that we have between the meals per labor hour and from where it currently is to where it needs to be. But I just wanted you to have kind of a little bit of an explanation about what that is, what our status has been over the last few years, so you can see the situation we're in right now. We, there is some movement around, you know, from one school to the next, in terms of moving workers in some cases, and so all of that's in the details, but the bottom line is to make those cuts to the CMP staff.
This is what I was trying to talk about last time, and God, I hate this because I know from being a teacher in elementary school, I can't see how they even lose anybody. They've got one lady sitting there at the computer, putting her numbers in, kids coming through, and then everybody else trying to get food out, I just, I hardly see how that's physically possible.
And that's basically, that's basically what has been communicated over time, is, you know, how are we going to do this or whatever, but you can see what is happening, we're going the wrong direction here.
Well, that's what I'm saying, do you think that we can go back and, and look at what we were doing with our, with our, with the new person that we were going to hire that's not starting till June 1st?
Just to be clear about that, we're, we're kind of rolling two things together, so I'm going to equate this to like, we have a principal position open at Caldwell, okay? So we're having to cut a teacher unit at Caldwell, one has nothing to do with the other, like we can't like move that position into, you know, into that slot because we have an opening. It's just similar, that we have CMP managers, CMP assistant manager, and CMP worker, they're three different positions, and so when we have, when each school has a manager and assistant manager, all six of our schools do, so when we have a vacancy in one of those two slots at any of our schools, like a principal or an assistant principal, I'm equating it to that on the certified side, I guess, then we post those positions and people have to apply for those jobs, you know, whether they are currently CMP workers, like whether they're currently teachers or counselors or whatever for a principal's job, or whether they're coming in from outside the position. So we, we wouldn't just move somebody into that position, they, they'd have to apply based a label for the position.
Well, yeah, I know what you're saying, I was just thinking that the one lady that did apply, she had like 20 plus years in the food and restaurant management area, and she even trained managers that came into her restaurants, and I just couldn't see why laying off employees, why we could not hire her and keep one of our own, and keep one of our own, which seems like she would be very qualified.
I don't understand what you're asking.
The other lady that, that also interviewed for the job?
Well, we had, we had several people that applied for that position.
We're not, we're not, we're not in a position as board members to determine who, who gets a job, I mean, who is recommended.
No, no, we are, it's not really, it's not, what we do do is approve and disapprove and recommendations.
Right.
And the question is, if you have in-house employees that are qualified to do that job, why do you fire them and hire somebody from the outside, if you can maintain all of your employees' jobs?
Because there's an interviewing process, and that interviewing process went through the proper, proper protocol, and it was recommended through the director, through the, to the superintendent, that's the chain of command.
Well, but we voted on it, we can also, we send them a vote, vote again next time. We can do that.
Why would we do that?
We still have.
Because we're laying off people that have been loyal to this system for a long time.
I understand that.
I would not recommend any change to what has been recommended and approved in, in that regard, there at all.
The interviewing process was done.
Well, but the voting process can be rescinded, I'm not saying the interview. I just hate to hurt people that have been with us for such a long time, who have these kind of abilities, who could, who does, who do have the experience and capability in, in a school. I mean, our new lady, does she, has she ever been in a school?
So what I would say is this is inappropriate conversation, in my opinion, for this point in time, to me, this conversation, I guess, that's when you vote up or down a recommendation from the superintendent for a specific position. I'm going back to the example that we have right now, we have, we have an administrative position open, and we're cutting some teacher units, I mean, you can see it's listed here, but I wouldn't delay us filling the principal position, if someone applied in the system and somehow that sent a chain reaction where it changed some moving parts with the teacher position, fine, but we wouldn't hold off on that, that would not be my recommendation anyway.
And as, as board members, we are not in a position to interview for the job.
No, Jack, so the question, vote. Doctor Spivak, I think.
We do vote.
We did try to ask, we did try to ask these questions, and I don't believe we were given the full, full information that we needed to make that decision at the time, I think that was inappropriate. I do not understand why, if you have qualified employees, and you're going to let them go when you have spots you can move them into.
Okay, so.
If there was anybody within the system that we, so we could have kept somebody from losing a job, I don't understand why we would, why that would have been the recommendation.
So when, as I mentioned on our, the personnel recommendations on the last board agenda, which included this position y'all were referring to, and again, it was, there was a, it involved a CMP manager position and assistant manager position, but because of retirees. I think Melba explained at the last meeting why it was important to go ahead and fill those positions, so hopefully, it seemed to answer the questions you had about why it was important.
But it was training, and these, the person we're talking about would not have to be trained.
Yeah, but.
Am I correct that the new person would not start till June 1st?
Well, what I would say to you is.
Is it May 1st?
We have a process, when, when we hope.
But I mean, which one, is it June 1st or May 1st?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
That the new person is supposed to start.
Well.
It said on the employment, June 1st, but the community is telling me it's May 1st.
They retire at the end of the school year, so it's June 1st?
Mm-hmm.
Her effective start date is June 1st, we're going to allow her to have some training days where she can see the process and how the school behaves.
I don't know who in the community you're talking to, but, so this is what I would say.
Well, they're talking to me.
When we have a position that is posted, you know, and y'all can change this if you want to with a new superintendent, but we've been, one of the things that this board charged me with, in very clear terms, and this board, this is a different board now, but the board very clearly charged me with, I'm just going to say it this way, cleaning up our hiring practices. And those of you who had individual meetings with me at that time, that was a, there were many things, but that was a very common theme, we've got to clean up our hiring practices here. There is a proper, there are proper human resources protocols, and you may remember too, Advanced Ed had a laundry list of, of things that, that's where we got a priority improvement citation in that area. So not only did the board immediately tell me, we've got to clean up our hiring practices, but Advanced Ed followed suit two months later and said, y'all got to clean up your hiring practices. So we worked very hard to be very clean, when we post a position, we work through a process that is fair to everyone who has applied for the position, whether they are inside the school system, outside the school system, and, and the goal is to select the very best person for that position at that time, that's the goal. You know, and, and I can tell you that I and those who've worked right with me, you know, in, in, under my supervision to do this, that, that's been our goal, is to keep it, keep it clean, is the way I'm going to say it. And so with that particular position, I know I said, and it sounds like there's a difference in philosophy here, and that's something the board's going to need to talk about when y'all decide, you know, what do you want the next superintendent to do, how do you want the processes to go forward, do you want to only just hire your people in the system and keep those folks in there, or every time you post a job, do you want to go through and go through that process and determine who, who do we think is the very best person? My philosophy is very clear about those kinds of things, I always look at it this way, and, and it's not that you always do make the right decision, but if you have those processes in place, you, you get a lot of things right on the front end, and then they're here for the long term, and at the end of the day, our kids benefit, if we want to have excellent schools and excellent school system, and this is what I heard from the board, the way we've been doing things is not okay, that's what I was told. And so, and again, we've worked very hard to clean this up. So when we posted, when we posted those two positions, Melba, the principal of the school, and our HR director worked together through the process, you know, they looked at all of the people who had applied, they identified criteria, they, we don't interview everybody that applies for a job, we go through a process to select who we interview, go through that process, and then there's a, there's discussion that happens, and there are things that happen behind the scenes that aren't evident to the board, people in the community, or even sometimes with me, if I'm not in the room when the interviews are happening. And so I ask questions sometimes, and they'll, they're good about reporting back to me, okay, this is why we made the decision we did, and then I bring a recommendation to the board, that's how we work through these processes. So to circumvent that would be to go back on what was communicated to me about how this board wanted to handle hiring processes. And if that's what y'all want to do moving forward, I'm saying to you that not only was this important to the board, but people who do accredit school systems, those kinds of things are important to them, and, and it will come up again, if, if, I think they'll be very happy with what the board has put in place and what we have put in place here the next time they come to visit. Not happy if you go back to, you know, some of the things that were happening before, and I'm hearing just little, some of the things I'm hearing, you know, hearken back to maybe, maybe the way some of those things were handled in the past, based on what was communicated to me by this board. So that's kind of philosophically where we're coming from, we had to fill a manager's position, and we had to fill an assistant manager's position, we don't just stick somebody in there, we go through the whole process, and those three people, the principal that this board has entrusted to make decisions for our school, the CMP director that this board has entrusted to make decisions for the CMP program, and our human resources person who has been the keeper of a lot of these processes we've put in place, those people came to the professional opinions that the people I recommended were the best candidates for those two positions. And I, I hear what you're saying, and trust me, nobody wants to cut positions, I've had the unfortunate, I walked in the door here and we had to start making cuts and get a handle on our finances, that's not been fun. But at the same time, you don't want to start just shuffling things around when you, when you, you want to try to make the best hiring choices, and I'm not saying there aren't differences of opinion sometimes, and at the end of the day, the board has the final say on what the superintendent recommends, but just know that they're, these are not flippant decisions that are made, we're going to start interviewing next week for the Caldwell principal's position. I can't tell you how much time goes into just going through and analyzing and looking before we even decide who we want to talk to, and then once we talk to the people and contact record, go through all those processes, there's a lot that goes into that that y'all don't see, but we've been faithful in those processes, I think, and have trained our administrators to do a better job in those areas, and, and so that's, that's where recommendations are coming from that I'm bringing to you. So in that regard, the reason I say one has nothing to do with the other is because of what I just said, that those recommendations didn't have anything to do with whether or not we were going to have to cut CMP worker positions, because we weren't cutting, you know, manager and assistant manager positions.
Nice to speak.
Sure.
My problem is that I specifically requested to know exactly how many CMP positions would be, would be lost, and I was not given that information, it was relayed that that would just cause too much questioning and too much. We had been told CMP employees would be cut, but I never got a number.
Okay.
And I asked, and I asked if any of the people in the program were allowed to apply and were they considered first, but it sounds to me, after the fact, I'm finding out, yes, several applied, but no, they were not given a job. My concern is that we have, if we have loyal employees that are tenured or not tenured, I don't know how CMP works, but why you don't try to find someone that you already had hired rather than forcing them to lose their job, that's my concern.
Moving forward, if this board wants to direct the superintendent to only hire internally or whatever, y'all, I mean, you can have that conversation, that is not the conversation we have had.
Not at all.
Up until this point.
But I would think that's what we're saying, to only hire internally, I'm just saying, if you have to hire someone that has to have a lot of training, even though they have a degree, maybe the person who doesn't need the training, but maybe they don't have a four-year degree from college, would be just, or as well, or maybe do a better job than a person with a degree.
What I would say to you, what I would say to you, first of all, what I would say to you as board members is, if you disagree with the recommendation that the superintendent has made, your role, in my humble opinion, is to vote it up or down.
Right.
As an individual board member, and collectively, the board approves recommendations or they don't. The other thing was, you mentioned not giving information, and his, and again, you can give different instructions, but since I've been here, we, you know, I communicate in the fall, as soon as we have the, the numbers, ADM, which tells us, remember back in the fall, I communicated as soon as we had the, you know, the, the report for the, basically it's a prediction of what your loss or gain in teacher units and enrollment is based on the ADM that's calculated to inform staffing for the next year. So I gave that information to the board, since I've been here, that's what's happened immediately, as soon as we know. That first year, we did a whole lot of conversation and instruction and information with the board, Becky and I did, because it was a whole new world, the financial issues we were having, so almost on a monthly basis, we were having little information sessions about what does all this mean for our financial situation, and you remember, I put together in writing information, and Becky did too, trying to explain all of this. But, but this is consistent, like what I'm doing tonight was always the plan to, at the work session preceding the month where we have two board meetings where we do personnel actions, so before, I'm asking you to act on anything that has anything to do with what's in here, that I give you an overview. There are reasons, there are some good reasons why, you know, I have more details, you know, names exactly, you know, if there are people being non-renewed for job performance, or recommended for non-renewal for job performance, things like that, and that will come in due time, but there's a reason we don't sit here in an open meeting, the way I look at it, it's a respect issue, it is not respectful to employees for me to sit in the boardroom and air all of that out, they deserve, our employees deserve, I would expect the same thing, deserve to have one-on-one discussion about, you know, their issues with their job performance, or even if they're no fault of their own, like we're having to make cuts, or like I mentioned, that we're having to move a teacher from one school to the next while they're not losing their job.
But we're not school names, so I don't want to know names.
I, I know, but the school system is small enough where if you start talking like we did, and I wasn't prepared for that conversation, I'm not saying I didn't know preliminarily because we'd already had staffing meetings, but that, just that little discussion, and I don't know where y'all are getting your information because I had not communicated yet cuts that we were planning to make, that's happening tonight, that little bit of discussion has caused, I mean, we have CMP workers here tonight who are very concerned, people I'm sure wondering, are they going to lose their job, are they going to be transferred, we haven't had time yet to sit down and have those conversations and finalize all of this, so I think, that's not the way I like to do business, I like to.
How else could we find out though if we don't ask in an open meeting?
Let me say something, can I say something?
Yeah.
I was embarrassed last time. I'm not accusing anybody of deliberation or collaboration, but I know that I've just, and I understand exactly the point you're making, you know, why don't we hire somebody from the outside when we're going to move somebody up and not lost a person, basically. When did you decide you were going to mention this? Because every time I've had a conflict about, even a personnel issue, I called Dr. Spivak, and I told her, I have a, I have a question about this, I don't think, I might even say, I don't think I can support this, and then she could decide whether she wants to take it off the agenda, or whether she wanted to go ahead and let me vote up or down, I don't think y'all, you know, you completely blindsided us.
Blindsided.
Here, let me finish now, you, you'll be able to talk in a minute. So the whole thing, and, you know, I'm just, I'm not a hog or anything, but here's the way I see it, you go with an issue, I'm going to use a football thing, you know, you don't do the end around, you don't go from a complaint. You don't go from a complaining person to a board meeting to a board member. You know, you go through the process and you trust the people that you're paying all this money to to bring everything to you, and then when you see the agenda and it's still not clear to you why they're good, which is obviously not clear to y'all, that's why that is being done, then you get on the phone and you say, can you ask questions? Now, my question to y'all is, did you call Dr. Spivey?
No, I did not. I work.
Well...
We all work.
We all have time to text and call and everything else.
And I like to be told the truth.
That's not the way you do it though. You're going to be on the board and you're going to try to, you try to work something out before it comes to this situation out here at this table.
Do you understand what the Open Meetings Act is about?
I definitely understand what that's about.
Okay. That is because these things should be out in the open. They should be discussed.
That's true. It's still going to be out in the open.
Nobody asked any names. All I asked was how many workers are we going to cut? Because I wanted an idea before I voted on hiring somebody from the outside, before I voted on replacing somebody, I just wanted, are we talking about...
But it's still a matter of respect. It's about opening, that's nothing violation, I mean, open.
It is a matter of respect and it was a simple answer, three and a half. And I didn't, I never got that.
Why couldn't you ask that before the meeting?
Because quite frankly, I wasn't sure I would get that.
I got it every time.
Well, can I say something? First of all, I didn't have all of my documents for, I mean, you can see that there's a lot of information in here. I didn't have that in front of me. I wasn't prepared to give a staffing overview because it didn't have anything to do with what I was recommending that night in my view. So I wasn't prepared. Off the top of my head, I could remember some about the C and P, but, you know, I hear your comments, basically that you, I'm innocent or calling me a liar, or telling me that I wouldn't, you wouldn't get the truth. I will, I, I, I just had, I'm sorry, but I have to say this. I have never, ever in my entire career been, compromise my integrity, I'll say it that way, in terms of giving false information and that sort of thing. So I've got two and a half months here left, and I'm going to just ask, I'm going to be respectful to all five of you, and we've got a lot of work to do in the last two and a half months. And I'm working just as hard as I have been the whole time I've been here and I plan to continue to do that. This is going to go nowhere fast if we sit in this boardroom and have these kinds of conversations. I've said, if I've said it once, I've said three million times, and this board has been told this in multiple trainings with other people. The board and the superintendent set the tone for the, for the school system. It sounds cliche, but it's really true. And I'm just going to ask that we try to set aside whatever personal differences we have, and I've heard Mr. Esslinger say this in his prayer over and over again, and it's my prayer too. I will be happy to share, I've told you, I'll be happy to share any information, answer any questions. There's never been a time when any board member has asked me a question that I have not, the information I can give or that I have, I've not been happy to pass that along. And I will continue to do that. There is certain information that is not appropriate to sit here at this board table and discuss, in my opinion. And so I'm just going to ask that we try to be respectful to each other moving forward and as we disagree, limit the kinds of comments that are being made here tonight. It is hurtful and in my opinion, it's incredibly disrespectful.
And it's not just to the superintendent. It's disrespectful to the people that we hire to make these decisions. I mean, they are our directors. They're, they're, they have built a career to be the director of a certain, and we hired them to be the C and P director or the, or the special education director. They're not taking these decisions lightly either, and it's our job to support them as much as we support the superintendent. We put them in those positions. We, we voted to put them in those positions and they're trying to do their jobs and we need to remember, this is our job up here to vote. It's not our job to interview C and P managers.
Nobody wants to. But what I asked was simply what had been asked of me and was a number, and I never could get it.
I wasn't prepared to give that information that night. I wasn't, and that's what you're getting tonight. That was the plan all along. If I had known that those were questions that you had, I would have, as I always have, brought information to the table or shared outside of the board meeting, sent that information to all five board members.
It could have been in the form of a text message. We all know that Dr. Spivey responds to us. We all know that when we make a phone call to her, she returns that phone call. I can't say that that's the way that it's, I can't say that that's a two-way communication thing going on right now with this board. I'm not going to, you know, it's, some, some communication is going unanswered, some attempts to communicate is going unanswered. That's not respectful. And if you want, if you want an answer to something, all you have to do is make a phone call. And you can still, again, at least you'd be prepared to answer that for us, right? Because that's what we're taught in all of our A S B training to do, to communicate with the superintendent, ask the information, and then you can still, in the open meeting, ask that question again, but at least someone is prepared to answer it.
Well, that, I think that's when the last time I wanted to try to table that and let us vote May the 4th so that, because she didn't have the information.
But you still didn't prepare.